6:39 and we will now have the Downey Planning Commission meeting come to order, the June 4th meeting, and if you can please rise and join me in the flag salute. Gil, would you like to lead us in the flag?
Absolutely, sir. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you guys remain standing, I'll say a quick prayer. I want to put this on the agenda for future use, but good and gracious God, thank you for the gift of today. Please guide us and protect us to do what's right for our community and for all those involved, and for those who protect us, our police, our fire, and our military. Give them that extra protection that they give to us. Please, tonight, as we do the business of the city, as we do the business of our community, give us the wisdom that we need to do the right thing. In your name we pray. Amen. Okay, so, may I have the Planning Commission Secretary Rhea, please, call the role?
Yes. Commissioner Luhon?
Present.
Commissioner Sakali? Excused. Commissioner Legospi?
Present.
Vice Chair Uva?
Present.
And Chair Guerra?
I am here. Thank you so much. This is the time set aside for oral communication from the Planning Commission. Does any commissioner wish to make an announcement of a foreign conference meeting or request items for future agenda?
I'll leave that for me.
I just have one comment. I just wanted to thank the staff, Irma, Abraham, and Swati, for the lovely presentation that they gave us, Downey, the Greater Downey Association of Realtors, last week. It was a wonderful presentation. I appreciate all the efforts and work you put into that. That's my report.
I would second that. I was part of the Zoom as well, and I believe overall, it was very impressive. And you made all of us proud. It's about 3,000 members in the board, and we were very impressed. Thank you. And I have none other than that.
Great. No, and the only thing, I just, I mentioned that they're doing that, and we don't have to, I don't want to be the only one doing it, but I'd like to put the invocation on the agenda in the future, please, and it could be any one of you or somebody else to do it. It doesn't have to be me. I just want to make sure that we always give our Creator a little bit of ask. Okay, presentations. Does the Community Development Director have a report on City Council action or any other general updates?
General updates from as far as the city staff is that we're, as you know, undertaking our city's general plan update, which is one in a planner's lifetime kind of project. The general plan is updated, as we've updated you before, once every 20 years, and we're currently undergoing the community engagement process along with some of the back-of-house analysis that goes along with updating all the 10 elements of the general plan. Staff has been attending various community events, what we call our pop-up events, the Bunny Patch, another community event, and then the other one that's coming up is this Saturday at the Men's Health Wellness Fair. There will be a booth hosted by the Planning Division, with the planners have boards, and we're seeking community input. We also have the survey that we're promoting. We provided you a copy of the flyer with the QR code to quickly fill out the survey. If we can ask you to fill it out yourselves and also promote it within your networks, we'd really appreciate it. Our social media coordinator will be promoting it on our Downey city channels, but if we ask you if you can promote it through your channels, we'd greatly appreciate it. The other point of business that I wanted to update you on is the city will be replacing carpet on the first floor, or I think all carpet within all floors, but we're affected on the first floor, so maybe I feel like it's only the first floor, but there'll be other floors as well. The chambers carpet will be replaced in the month of July sometime, along with our public counter back-of-house area that has carpet, so we will not be having a meeting in July in this chamber or any Planning Commission meetings. We don't have items for business. As you may recall, we were already planning to cancel the July 2nd meeting due to the fact that it's on the 4th of July weekend, and we tend to have issues with quorum then, and we didn't have any city business anyway, so we will also not have the July 16th meeting due to the carpeting planning that we're planning to accommodate, and then we don't have any city business for the Planning Commission on June 18th. So the next three meetings, if you want to write it down, June 18th, July 2nd, and July 16th, no Planning Commission meetings, and we'll follow up with an email just as your reminder, so you can make sure you have it on your calendars. So the next Planning Commission meeting will be on August 6th. And with that, I just did want to let you and the public know that planners won't be necessarily taking a break, because we won't have Planning Commission meeting that'll really give us time to focus on the general plan activities that are quite extensive, require a lot of analysis, a lot of staff time, assimilating information, reviewing geographic information systems, maps, online, and working internally with our other partners in the other departments that are also involved in the general plan update. We have a technical working committee that we're going to start working a little bit more heavily with to develop some of the programs and policies, so this break, although it may be a break from Planning Commission, will not be a break for a planner, so thank you to the staff for doing the work.
And I, you made all of us proud. It's about 3,000 members in the board, and I, we were very impressed. Thank you. And I have none other than that.
Great. No, and the only thing I just, I mentioned that they're doing that. And, and we don't have to, I don't want to be the only one doing it, but I like to put the invocation on the agenda in the future, please. And it can be any, any one of you or somebody else to do it. It doesn't have to be me. I just, I just want to make sure that. We always give our creator a little bit of ask. So, okay, presentations. Does the community development director have a report on city council action or any other general updates?
General updates from as far as the city staff is that we're, as you know, undertaking our city's general plan update, which is one in a planner's lifetime kind of project. It's, the general plan is updated as we've updated you before, once every 20 years. And we're currently undergoing the community engagement process along with some of the back of house analysis that goes along with updating all the 10 elements of the general plan. Staff has been attending various community events, what we call our pop-up events, the Bunny Patch, another community event. And then the other one that's coming up is this Saturday at the Men's Health Wellness Fair. There will be a booth hosted by the planning division with the planners have boards and we're seeking community input. We also have the survey that we're promoting. We provided you a copy of the flyer with the QR code to quickly fill out the survey. If we can ask you to fill it out yourselves and also promote it within your networks, we'd really appreciate it. Our social media coordinator will be promoting it on our Downey city channels. But if we ask you if you can promote it through your channels, we'd greatly appreciate it. The other point of business that I wanted to update you on is the city will be replacing carpet on the first floor, or I think all carpet within all floors, but we're affected on the first floor. So maybe I feel like it's only the first floor, but there'll be other floors as well. The chambers carpet will be replaced in the month of July sometime, along with our public counter back of house area that has carpet. So we will not be having a meeting in July in this chamber or any planning commission meetings. We don't have items for business. As you may recall, we were already planning to cancel the July 2nd meeting due to the fact that it's on the 4th of July weekend, and we tend to have issues with quorum then, and we didn't have any city business anyway. So we will also not have the July 16th meeting due to the carpeting planning that we're planning to accommodate. And then we don't have any city business for the planning commission on June 18th. So the next three meetings, if you want to write it down, June 18th, July 2nd, and July 16th, no planning commission meetings. And we'll follow up with an email just as a reminder so you can make sure you have it on your calendars. So the next planning commission meeting will be on August 6th. And with that, I just did want to let you and the public know that planners won't be necessarily taking a break because we won't have planning commission meeting that'll really give us time to focus on the general plan activities that are quite extensive, require a lot of analysis, a lot of staff time assimilating information, reviewing geographic information systems, maps online, and working internally with our other partners in the other departments that are also involved in the general plan update. We have a technical working committee that we're going to start working a little bit more heavily with to develop some of the programs and policies. So this break, although it may be a break from planning commission, will not be a break for a planner. So thank you to the staff for doing the work and also staffing the planning commission. But we appreciate all the progress that we've been able to make, and we encourage you to help us promote the community engagement process in the next few months. And then just because I was asked this recently, the, as a reminder, the general plan update will be completed in the spring of 2026. I can't believe I'm saying 2026, but yes, 2026. So as we're, the community engagement process is throughout the general plan update, but we definitely wanted to front load a lot of community engagement activities now before we kick off the environmental impact report studies that'll be kicking off in the next few weeks. So that is one of the reasons we really wanted to promote the survey as part of that process. And let's see if I have another update. Those are all the updates I have for tonight, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now is the time set aside for public hearing for PLN-24-00174 for conditional use permit. Does the planning commission secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Will the community development director introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, Chair. Tonight's item will be presented by our associate planner, Jerry Clemente. And we have a PowerPoint presentation to accompany that.
You drew the short straw, huh? Okay.
He was here early prepping for a chair. Very professional.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience. The item before you is case number PLN 24-00174, a request for a modification for the existing condition use permit, CUP, to remove the condition number 12 from the approved resolution number 193096, and a request for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-sales, for off-site sales under a type 21 alcohol beverage control license at an existing convenience store, 7-Elevens, located at 13034 Downey Avenue. The applicant is present tonight, and his name is Bruce Evans. The applicant requests to seek an update to the store's alcohol license by removing a restriction that currently limits the sale to only beer and wine under a existing resolution number 193096. The applicant is proposing to replace that, the existing type 20 license of off-sale beer and wine with a type 21 license, which would allow for off-sales of distilled spirits in addition to beer and wine. Since the, since the changes affect the condition of the existing CUP, it requires planning commissions to review in accordance to the Downey Municipal Code in terms of location, operation, and site development. The subject site is located at the intersection of Downey and Gardendale Street. The subject property is zone C1, as reflected on the map to the left, with a general land use designation neighborhood commercial on the map to the right. Medium-density residential areas are located to the north and to the east of the subject site, while low-medium density residential is to the west. To the south, we find the city of Paramount, that features a grocery store to the south known as Super A Foods. The site is comprised of a single commercial building of 2,800 square feet, highlighted in yellow, and is placed on a 19,600 square foot lot. This convenience store was constructed recently in 2002, and currently there is a total of 12 parking stalls. 11 are standard and 188. The site has a vehicular access via two driveways along Downey Avenue and the other on Gardendale Street. The subject site was previously approved by the planning commission in 2019 under a site plan review and condition use permit number PLN 1800191 under resolution 193096 for the development of a single commercial building to operate as a convenience store and to permit the off-site sale of beer and wine under a type 20 license. Additionally, the property underwent a zoning amendment from PB, which is Parking Buffer, and C2, a general commercial, all to reflect a C1 neighborhood commercial to align with the site's general plan land use designation of neighborhood commercials. The proposed use is to modify the resolution 193096 to allow the sale of distilled spirits, beer and wine, under type 21 license, which is off-sale general for the, for off-site consumption. And for context, the slide provided here is a recent view of the existing west elevation along Downey Avenue, which is also serves as the primary interest for 7-Elevens. The slide provides the southern elevation along Gardendale Street. Here we see the parking and the trash enclosure on the side side. This slide displays the current floor plan of the convenience store, including the security camera locations and designation of the alcohol display areas. The area reflects the previously approved beer and wine display, which is included here for reference only. The new component of this request is to propose the display area for distilled spirits, which is highlighted in blue, which is on the south side of this floor plan, which is located right behind the cashier counter, which is highlighted in purple. This placement was intentionally selected to ensure the control axis minimize theft and discourage impulsive consumption. Also, there are two circles located to the bottom, which reflects a 360-degree camera, which is an existing surveillance camera near the customer's entrance, enhancing visibility for monitoring the alcohol-related area. There's no physical changes that are proposed to the layout or square footage enlargement. This is only for the operational adjustments in licensing and the product placement that is limited to a five-by-five display only accessible by store employees. Now, a public notice has been issued for this item. On May 22nd, 2025, the notice of the upcoming public hearing before the planning commission was published in the Downey Patriot and mailed to all tenants and property owners within 500 square, 500 feet of the subject site. At the time of this report publication, the staff has not received any correspondence pertaining to the public hearing notice. The development committee composed of planning, police, fire, public works, and building and safety reviewed the requested items. No objections were raised, and it was determined that the current CUP under resolution number 1930, I mean, dash 3096 continues to address the departmental concerns. However, the planning division has proposed additional conditions to enhance safety and minimize nuisance activities, which includes visibility improvements, signage discouraging loitering, and operational safeguards. Specifically, as detailed in the Exhibit C of the resolution number 25-4051, condition number 11, which prohibits the sale of distilled spirits in containers smaller than 7,500 milliliters in order to reduce the potential for discreet and immediate consumption. Condition number five limits the display of distilled spirits to a secure area behind the cashier. And condition number 12 strictly prohibits the sampling of alcohol beverages on site.
Sorry.
Environmental analysis, the modification for the condition use permit is categorically exempt from further review under SEQA guidelines section 15301, which is classified as class one of existing facilities. And this section consists of the project that involves no or negligible expansion of the existing use. The proposed ABC type 21 license for the off-site sale of alcohol will not alter the existing facility on site. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the modification of the condition use permit to allow a convenience store to operate under a type 21 ABC license that will allow for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. Now, please note that the recommendation also includes the updated item, the memorandum that's before you, that addresses the minotapographical error in the planning condition of approval number 11, which currently states that the sale of distilled spirits shall be of bottles greater than 7,500 in volume. The revised item reflects the sale of distilled spirits shall be of bottles of 75 milliliters or larger in volume. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I'll start with Vice Chair Uva.
No questions. Seems very straightforward.
Commissioner Hector?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Gil?
I have none, sir.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
Good job, Jerry.
Just for, just to let you guys know, this is 500 milligrams on their bottled water. So it's got to be a little bit bigger than that, so you can't consume it. I asked. I was kind of curious.
Just for clarification, 750 milliliters would be like a standard-sized wine bottle for reference.
Yeah, right. Okay, all right. Thank you. I will now, before I open up the public hearing and call the applicant or the representative, any other commissioners want to disclose any pre-hearing site visits, pre-hearing discussions the commissioners may have had about the project?
I have none.
I have none.
Me neither.
No, I, I went there and walked it off the other day and so forth. And I did have a meeting with our staff right before this meeting here about it, so just wanted to disclose.
I drive daily by it, but I don't, I haven't stopped by.
Well, you can go there now at, right after at 6:10 and by, you know, in the morning.
They had a grand opening, I think a while back.
You can have Irish coffee now.
There you go. But it looks, it was crowded, so I couldn't park. That's why I didn't stop, because I wanted to stop by and say hi when they had the grand opening. So I was after your remodel. It's really nice. I do got to agree, they just updated the whole corner lot.
Well, you remember what it used to be. It was a car dealership. It was a car dealership that changed every six months.
Yeah, so definitely that's the plus for the neighborhood right there.
Maybe we could all take a field trip once. It's fully stocked with the spirits.
And I think there's some places they do have like, like wine tasting, they have tequila tasting, so that's, I think you were. So there is tequila tasting.
I am now, okay, I am now going to open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Would the applicant or the representatives please come forward to give testimony?
Hi, good evening. I'm Bruce Evans. I represent 7-Eleven. I have Gurinder Singh with me tonight. He is the franchisee for this location. Gurinder was a healthcare executive in his earlier life, and he traded that to become a 7-Eleven franchisee. The store opened in 2022 as a corporate store. He ran it about a year, and then Gurinder took over in 2023. I don't have anything to add. It's not already in the staff report. I think it's all in there. It's very clear from the conditions that this store cannot morph into anything resembling a liquor store. Talking about a very small area for the, for the distilled spirits behind the counter. I do want to thank Jerry. He's been incredibly professional and responsive throughout this process. We appreciate that. When I first went to this store, the thing that struck me about it is, and we were talking earlier tonight, is it's about the, one of the best-looking 7-Elevens you're ever going to see. I would attribute that to the city's landscaping plan that they required when it opened. But there is a lot of landscaping, a lot of greenery around that site, and, and we're proud of how it looks. So we're very grateful for the positive staff report, grateful for the police comments that they had no concerns about the proposal. And again, thank you to staff and happy to answer any questions.
What percentage do you anticipate of total sales to be this?
Total sales at 7-Elevens for alcohol are generally less than 15%. And that would, that would continue to be the case even with the addition of distilled spirits.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a game changer in terms of the alcohol sales. It's just one extra product. If they can make the store more convenient, just like they want to sell milk or bread or anything else that if they can make that extra sale, it's a, it's a positive for the store.
What, what, how many, what percentage of 7-Elevens have this, out of curiosity?
Traditionally, not very many. We have been adding it at stores, certain stores where their corporation feels like they have a strong franchisee and it's a good fit for the store. One of the, a couple of drivers for that is the cutbacks in tobacco products. The stores just can't sell tobacco products like they once could because of all the flavor bans and lots and lots of restrictions on that. So the corporation is looking to support the franchisees. And licenses, liquor licenses, you have to buy them, and they've become, they've become better, better priced with COVID and everything else and folks going out of business. So it's been a little more attractive to buy those liquor licenses, and it makes it, makes more business sense, given, given the limited sales that they're going to get out of it.
Thank you, sir.
I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. So you mentioned it was corporate, it was a corporate store at first, then the franchisee took over. Is there a connection between that and the fact that you, corporate approved the sale of full liquor at this point? Or there's no connection? Because it was a corporate store at one point.
No, there's no connection. They, they are always, they are generally always looking to find a franchisee for their stores. It's just sometimes it takes a while.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any other questions for the commissioners. Okay. May staff confirm there's been any correspondence and opposition?
Staff has not received any correspondence on opposition.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the, or opposition, in favor or opposition to the applicant? There's only one other person over there. I see no one, so, and there is no rebuttal. Can I ask staff a couple of questions now, or do I have to close the public hearing?
I think you can ask staff a question.
So I just wanted to go on, because I talked to Irma before on there, that this does not have anything to do with the recent ordinance that we passed on the sale of alcohol and so forth, because it's a restaurant and everything else. So this wouldn't have been impacted one way or the other. And I was, I'm glad to see that the development review committee approved it, and that's the biggest concern that we always have. My other question would be to the staff is, have we had any issues there? Has there any, been, been any issue just on the regular sale of beer, our police department been there or anything like that?
Based on our call service since the operation of, of 7-Eleven since, since 2022, there hasn't been any, although there's been reports or call for services for the item, but nothing in relationship to the store itself. Police has gone out there for items that pertain to traffic stops or items or situations where they've stopped an individual that's associated or close to the proximity. Usually tickets, ticketed items are usually, or police officers will usually provide an address or a local location. In this case being 7-Elevens, when they're associated with some sort of misdemeanor item associating with the call service.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And the last question, is there, is it standard to, I don't know, to allow sale of alcohol at 6:00 in the morning? Is that the 2:00 to 6:00 blackout, is that a standard time? Is that, or do we, is that what we do the rest of the, I don't know, it just seems like weird.
Chair, so this, as, as our planner, project planner mentioned, this timeline actually stems from the state. It's not a city timeline. So the 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM is a restriction from the State Department of Alcoholic Beverages.
That's, that's weird. They restrict everything else except you could, at 6:10 AM, you can buy all the alcohol that you want. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I don't want to get my political views going. All right, at this time, there's no rebuttal, and any other? All right, at this time, there's no rebuttal, and any other final thoughts or questions from the Planning Commission?
You know, Chair Gera, actually, you got me thinking, because I, I've, I've seen-
Commissioner Eli Gaspie, I don't know if, is your mic on?
It is, it is, ma'am. I've seen, I've seen other liquor stores, they stop the, the sale of, of beer and liquor before two o'clock, so are we talking about two o'clock on the dot, or are we talking about one forty-five in the morning, fifteen minutes before two o'clock? If someone's waiting, someone's waiting in line, is, could there, is there enough cushion there to, that may or may not disappoint someone that's in line?
I don't know.
Most liquor stores, I see it's, it's before two o'clock, so one forty-five, they'll, they'll turn that lock to the left or to the right, and-
Well, they're still open.
Yeah.
They just can't sell it at two fifteen.
Right.
Unless you have a line of people buying seven hundred and fifty milligram wine bottles at, at two oh five, so I don't know if that's going to be an issue, but that's just my opinion.
Chair Gera, if I could address Commissioner Eli Gaspie's question, the condition of approval as proposed would be Condition Number Eight, which is, sale of alcohol is prohibited between two AM and six AM, and to answer your question, anything beyond two AM would not be in accordance with the conditional use permit, so it, it is pretty typical for, not just a seven-eleven or retail store, for anything that has restrictions on time that their customers are queued up so that the transaction can happen before the cutoff time.
Understood, thank you.
Great. Okay, so, hearing no other discussion, the public hearing is now closed. It's time for the Planning Commission to deliberate, is there any other things that you would, anybody would like to deliberate about? Okay, all right, so what's the pleasure of the Planning Commission?
Make a motion?
Okay, I'll make it, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation and approve PLN two four zero zero one seven four, thank you.
Okay, is there, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Luhon, okay. Planning Commission Secretary Rhea, would you please call the vote?
Chair Gera, can I just get a point of clarification, does the motion include staff's recommended red lines as-
Yeah, and the wording on there, because I, I think it was something that, yeah, it was, the way it was, it wasn't clarified, the, the size on there, and that's what the, the recommendation was to, to include that, what the size was and so forth, yes.
Is that a-
Well, timeout, excuse me, on there, Mr. Gillespie, is, are you approved with that amendment there?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so yes, we do have a motion in a second, as redrafted, on there, if you'd all please vote. Okay, all right, it passes forward to nothing on there, thank you very much, best of luck to you. There's non-agenda public comment? Sir, you're the only one left, would you like to talk on non-agenda public comment, or you, you just want to see how nice-looking we all are up here, right? Yes, sir, okay, it's good to see you here too, sir. Okay, there's no yellow cards taken on there, so we have that now, we have the consent calendar.
Congratulations.
So, yeah, thank you, sir.
Good luck.
I, I, I want to ask our, our director on there if she mentioned something here on the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gera, the next item is an item that's on the consent calendar, where we would normally not provide a staff report on consent items, I did provide, want to provide some context to why this item is on the consent calendar. The, the request is a clarification of a conditions of approval that were part of a conditional use permit that was authorized in December of two thousand and nine. Recently, the business owner that is part of the Gloria's Restaurant Establishment at seven four zero one Florence Avenue came to the city wanting to renew their police permit, which is a permit that's required, that accompanies a conditional use permit typically, but in this case, it's required because they are authorized to have live entertainment. Staff, when reviewing, city staff when reviewing the request for the renewal, looked at the resolution, and because the resolution title and the, the language wasn't clear, that live entertainment was approved with the original conditional use permit at that point, let the applicant know, you don't have approval, you need a conditional use permit for live entertainment. The applicant then, the business owner then came to the Planning Division, talked to planning staff, planning staff researched the resolutions and the hearings and the staff report and the minutes, et cetera, and through our research, we did find that live entertainment was indeed approved as part of the original application, and that because the resolution title was not clear that it included live entertainment, that in itself caused confusion for staff, but it was clear that the live entertainment was included as part of the conditions of approval originally. So tonight's consent item is what the director, under my authority, I would call a minor clarification. In the spirit of transparency, I did want to bring it to the Planning Commission for concurrence that this clarification on the resolution indicating clearly that live entertainment was approved with the original CUP, is a part of the record moving forward, and then again, for transparency, just making sure that everyone's aware of this clarification that's being made under the authority of the director and also with the concurrence of the Planning Commission, and that's what the consent item would do if it were to pass.
And then to add to that further, there is a second memorandum in front of you, which also has a clarification for one of the conditions of approval, it was again, a typographical, it is more, a longer sentence was deleted unintentionally, and so this memorandum just clarifies that a large section of that initial or original condition of approval does in fact stay.
Yes, and, and because the sentence is long, thank you, Sweaty, because the sentence is long, is the original conditional use permit had the condition that indicated that any noise generated from the business shall comply with the noise maximums allowable in the municipal code, and should any noise complaints be submitted to the city, that the applicant would be responsible for hiring a noise consultant to resolve the noise issue at that time. That was in the original approval, so staff, that was inadvertently removed in the packet that was given to you, it's still relevant, so we are still continuing to include that condition.
Okay. Sir, any questions for our director? So, you know me, I always have to have questions on there, on there, so, out of curiosity, would this, if our, our alcohol ordinance, because this is a restaurant within, you know, so much of housing, where it's close by and whatever, would this have been permitted if it was coming in new today under our current ordinance that we passed a couple of months ago?
So, the, the ordinance that Chair Gera is referencing is the ordinance a few meetings ago, where the commission recommended to the city council to establish buffer zones for businesses that had live entertainment or were serving alcohol and were in proximity to what was defined as sensitive uses by the city council. That item was recommended to the city council as approval, the, when the city council, when it was placed on their agenda, the city council decided to table that item to, not a date certain, to table the item for now, so that ordinance has not passed. But to answer Chair Gera's question, if that ordinance was in effect, this location would be within one of the sensitive buffer zone areas. But again, it makes it even more important to clarify that their original approval did include live entertainment so that no staff has that confusion in the future.
And, and this is, you know, when, when, just as I, as soon as I asked, I thought, remembered, I think we grandfathered this one in from that, yeah, that was on the list of the twelve or thirteen, yeah.
Correct, in, in the staff report research, we did identify Gloria's restaurant to be within, as operating with live entertainment.
Yeah, okay, great, so, anyways, they have, they have some of the best mocha hit they in town, by the way, just to let you guys know, but on the quiet side, not the loud side. So, anyways, I have an opinion on everything. Any other discussion on the consent calendar?
I have a quick question for Ms., we do, just out of curiosity, again, how did this come up? The, the business owner approached the city, or did we approach the business owner and why?
Yes, thank you for that question, Commissioner. The, the issue came up because the business owner was renewing their police permit that's required as part of them keeping their live entertainment up to code, and so, because they already have a police permit issued in the past, because that's, they've always had live entertainment, they received a renewal, a notification from the city to renew their permit, they filled out the application, they submitted it to the city, and when staff was reviewing it, and they saw the resolution, it didn't, the title didn't include live entertainment, then staff inadvertently told them that they didn't have a CUP for it, and that's how it, that's how it landed with the Planning Division, and then we let them know that we didn't want there to be confusion in future years, maybe different staff, and so we wanted to clarify this on their behalf.
Understood, is that permit, the police permit, is that annual renewed, or?
The police permit is an annual renewal.
Okay, we just caught it this year.
Yes, I think there was new staff assigned to review, and so I think they were doing a great job, and they took the title very literally, and so it does take some reading of the background material to determine that live entertainment was indeed included in the original approval.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I asked the same question an hour ago. At this time, for the question, we have a motion in a second for the consent calendar.
Just, I make a motion, approve administrative director determination for the CUP ninety sixteen.
Okay, okay, no, that's it, just approving the consent calendar, so, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Chair, once again, just to clarify, the motion does include the memorandum provided?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, hearing no further thing, please vote.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, does the Community Development Director have any additional comments?
I have no other updates, thank you.
Okay, we'll see everybody in a couple of months. Have a good summer. Okay, meeting adjourned, seven eighteen, thank you.
So Father's Day gift, or?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.